Now it's turning green.
Yeah.
Cast.
Can everybody hear me? Raise your hand if you can hear me. If you can't, can you hear me?
Is it green?
Alright.
It's on.
It's on. Can you hear me now?
Very well, Winnie.
No? You can't hear me? Or yes, you can? You can. Okay. I'm watching you. Alright, good. I got thumbs up in the back, so I think we're good. Call to order for the Forest Hill School District Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, September 21st.
Mr. Bibb?
Here.
Mrs. Jonas?
Here.
Dr. Resmussen?
Here.
Mrs. Stewart?
Here.
Mrs. Hosfeld?
Here.
1.3, Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.4, Safety Briefing. We have one exit down here. We have the exit entrance, which is an exit which you came in, and then there's a third one right down here with the double doors. Item 2.1, Motion to Adopt the Agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hosfeld?
Yes.
3.1, Approval of the Minutes of the Technology and Facilities Committee on August 4th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the Facilities and Technology Committee.
One second.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Item 3.2, Approval of Minutes of the Regular Meeting, August 17th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August.
Second.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Item 4.0, Commendations and Recognitions. We have the National Merit Scholarship Program commended, presented by Kyle Fender.
And Mr. Stewart.
And Mr. Stewart as well.
And Mr. Spencer.
Spencer.
Spencer. Good evening, everyone. Board of Education, Superintendent Hook, it's a pleasure to be here to recognize some great achievements of some of our students, and also a great night to recognize some of our staff members as well as some accomplishments of our building. Each year in the fall semester, Anderson High School and Turpin High School administer the PSAT to all sophomores as well as to a select group of high-achieving juniors. Approximately 1.5 million students across the nation take the PSAT each year, and top-scoring individuals move forward in the National Merit Scholarship Program as achieving either commended, semifinalist, or finalist status. We are exceedingly proud of the students who stand before you this evening, who will be standing before you this evening, of their hard work, determination, and academic excellence. They are leaders in the classroom and are highly involved in other activities throughout our building. We are also thankful for their parents. Most of them, I believe, are here tonight with us, and we would like to join them. We would like to recognize them, and again, if they could, please stand up so we can thank them for their dedication and emphasis on our students. Thank you for all that you have done over the years to guide, instruct, teach, and affirm to your son or daughter the importance of hard work in the classroom.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. And Mr. Spencer's absolutely right. We're about to recognize some incredible kids for doing some incredible work and standing out amongst their peers across the entire country. The top 50,000 students out of the over 1 million that Mr. Spencer mentioned qualify for commended status, so top 50,000 out of 1.5 million is not bad. Representing the top 3% of all students nationwide who took that exam, at this time, we're going to read off the names from each school, so students, when you hear your name, come on up, and we will give you a certificate of commendation, and then if you could, just stay up here for a photograph. For Anderson High School in the commended status, Amanda Branham, Elwin Iredale, Devon Lands, Evan Snyder, and Sean Teesman.
And from Turpin High School, Riley Bossy. And from Turpin High School, Riley Bossy, Talon Diaz, Carter Flora, Jordan Hart, Forrest Heiss. It's almost like graduation ceremony. Kate Hooper, Alexandra Johnson, Dylan Litten, Audrey Williams, and Noah Yamaguchi.
As Mr. Spencer hands out the award to the Turpin students, at this time, I would like to move that the superintendent recommend the board commend these students for their achievement and distinction for having been named commended students in the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Program and receive a certificate of commendation as well.
I'll make a motion to commend the 2022 National Merit Scholarship semifinalists as presented.
I'll second.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Mrs. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Thank you. The top 16,000 students qualify semifinalist, representing the top 1% of all students nationwide who took the exam. Out of this group, there's a process these individuals must do in order to consider for finalist status. Those following students, these following students have achieved semifinalist status at this time. From Turpin High School, Jacob Garing. Shovet Mishra. Vipul Rao. And Brady Williams.
And now the students from Anderson High School who are in semifinalist status. Daniel Hensler. Samuel Muzikawa. Cole Williams. And Benjamin Zal.
The superintendent recommends the board commend the four students for their achievement and distinction for having been named semifinalist in the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Program and present a certificate of commendation to them.
I'll make a motion to commend the 2022 students, National Merit Scholar students, as presented.
I'll second.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Mrs. Hosfeld?
Yes.
We are not done yet. We have student learners that we want to recognize, but also our teacher learners as well. So, Forest Hill School District is pleased to announce that both the district's high schools have once again earned the Governor's Thomas Edison Award for Excellence in STEM Education. The Ohio Academy of Science selected 45 Ohio schools to receive the award for their accomplishments during the 2021-2022 school year. Anderson and Turpin were both selected. Both schools will receive a special Governor's Award certificate. If our teachers are here, I'd like for you to come down with us. From our AHT, Anderson High School, I'll say that, Science Department, and the following teachers are recipients: Alex Bovee, Caitlin Calder, Emily Dorsey, Corey Larison, Courtney Snyder, David Brandon, Polly Loudon, Jeff Rodriguez, Jeffrey Granger, Justin Good, Luis Kemp, Patrick Reel, Taylor Rose, and Troy Spitzmuller. And then from Turpin, the following teachers are recipients: Beth Brill, Bill Benkin, Brett Granger, Carmen Vendito, Chris Mullins, Aaron Burling, I'm stuttering, I'm sorry, Gail Garza, James Glasser, Lizzie Burton, and Peter Hoying. Criteria for the Thomas Edison Award for Excellence included conducting a local science fair with 12 or more students, which we certainly did, and having two or more of these students participate in the 2021 Virtual District Science Day. Our students were also required to participate in at least one more youth science opportunity beyond the classroom. The Ohio Academy of Science defines STEM education as both the mastery and integration of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics for all preschool through 12th grade students, and incorporates scientific inquiry and technological design through student-focused, project-based curricula to develop communication skills, teamwork, collaboration, creativity, innovation, critical thinking, and problem solving. The Governor's Thomas Edison Awards program was established in 1985, and it recognizes Ohio schools and teachers who stimulate scientific student research and technological design and extend experiential opportunities beyond traditional classroom activities. The Technology Division of the Ohio Development Services Agency funded this program, and we are so very proud of our students and our staff who work so hard to earn this honor. So, there is a motion to commend Anderson and Turpin students, or schools and teachers mentioned for their achievement and distinction with the certificate provided to them.
I'll make a motion to commend Anderson and Turpin High Schools and the teachers here for enlisted for their achievement and distinction as presented.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Yeah. Minute thirty?
Yeah.
Okay. Can everybody hear me? We'll take a few minutes. I think there's band practice this evening, so there'll be people leaving. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. Okay. We also have area in the back for recording up there, so it doesn't disrupt any vision. So, if anybody with camera or recording, if you could go back up to the back where everybody else is sitting. Includes everybody, please. Anybody taking video that everybody else is back there up against the wall? Could you please go up? Thank you. Appreciate it. I think that we have, all the people that are taking videos are in the back row, please. We're just, we're waiting, please. I mean, we have people up that are sitting in the back. I mean, that's their, excuse me, right? I mean, we're trying to have some clear decorum of a meeting here, and if everybody's standing in the back. Sorry. Her camera is for the YouTube video? It's different.
We need a point of order. This is not a public meeting. It actually is not. It is a meeting in public. It is a meeting in public, not a public meeting. If you are asked to do something, you're to move to where you're supposed to be, or we will have security escort you out. If you would like to videotape, you're welcome to from the top. Otherwise, you can leave. That's your decision. It's that simple. This is not for everyone to scream out and yell and make a ruckus. That's not how this is supposed to be done.
I mean, you can certainly go back there and videotape, by all means. Yes. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to Kelly Brazil. Thank you.
Well, it's certainly an honor to be here this evening to recognize our buildings and their extremely hard work in the area of PBIS. We have six buildings this evening being recognized for their success with positive behavioral interventions and supports, PBIS. It involves teaching students expected behaviors in a consistent, positive way, modeling and acknowledging those behaviors, and helping all students meet expectations to be successful. PBIS has shown to improve student achievement, student behavior, and school climate. In 2015, Ohio PBIS Network first began recognizing schools that were model examples of PBIS implementation. This year, we have six of our buildings being recognized among only 375 other buildings within the state of Ohio in the levels of gold, silver, or bronze. This evening, I would like to recognize our six buildings earning bronze and/or gold recognition. We have Air Elementary, Nagel Middle School, and Anderson High School for receiving bronze awards, and Maddox, Wilson, and Turpin for receiving gold awards. If you would come down and receive your certificate of accommodation, we would be honored to present that to you. We have Kyle Fender representing Nagel Middle, or, excuse me, Anderson High School, sorry, Kyle Mack with Nagel, and Dave Spencer with Turpin, and we have Joy O'Brien with Maddox, Heather Holly with Air, and Erin Store with Wilson. Congratulations. So, we're not finished yet, right? We have more to acknowledge and recognize this evening. Not only do we have six buildings that have earned gold or bronze awards, we also want to recognize our district efforts. We are one of only 16 other school districts in the state of Ohio that have received district recognition for PBIS. So, that is, it's unbelievable, the work that goes into earning this award, and it's an honor to be here to acknowledge all of our districts, excuse me, all of our elementaries in our district. So, if we could have representatives from our other three buildings come down, and we would like to present all nine of our buildings with accommodation this evening in recognition. So, in addition to the six that I already announced, just so everyone knows, we also have Dan Hamilton with Sherwood, Michelle Selfed at Summit, and then Jody Davidson from Mercer. So, it's recommended to the board to commend Anderson, Air, Maddox, Nagel, Wilson, and Turpin schools and their PBIS teams for their achievement and distinction, and a certificate of accommodation be presented to them.
I'll make a motion to present Air, Anderson, Nagel, Maddox, Wilson, and Turpin for their PBIS awards.
Second.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Thank you. And it's also recommended to the board that the board commend all nine of our buildings for their district-level PBIS achievement and distinction at the state level.
I'll make a motion to commend all nine school buildings for their PBIS reward.
Second.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hosfeld?
Yes.
We can certainly take a pause for anybody that wants to exit the area, or stay and enjoy.
We have 6.0, the district update from the superintendent, when you're ready. Oh, sorry. 5.0, Correspondence and Procedure for Public Commentary. Procedure for Public Commentary. The board is committed to conducting its meetings in a a productive and efficient manner to assure that the meeting is completed in a reasonable amount of time while also recognizing the importance of fair and adequate opportunity for public input. In order to conduct an orderly and fair representation of expression, the board will provide a period of public participation at every regular board meeting. Public participation will be a total of 30 minutes. Each speaker will have three minutes. If there is more than 10 speakers, individual time will be adjusted down to fit within the 30 minutes. The board does not discriminate based on individual content in the speech or viewpoint of the speaker. If several people wish to speak on the same topic, the time limit may be adjusted at the president's discretion. Thank you. Thank you. Is this any better?
No.
No.
How about that? Slightly? Larry, do you want to try yours? I don't know if yours is any better than mine. Is that any better? I'm getting thumbs up from the back over there. Is there any thumbs up over here? It's kind of iffy. Okay. It may be the speakers. Okay. Thanks, Josh. Okay, 6.0, district updates from the superintendent.
Thank you, Mrs. Hostfeld, members of the board. Very quickly, I just want to add my congratulations to all of our award winners. It's one of the most exciting times as a building principal, when students would receive commendations and semifinalists, and later in the spring is when the finalists, and it just keeps getting a smaller group of individuals. And it's, I'm telling you, just to be commended is amazing. It is absolutely amazing. And so I'm just so proud of our kids for doing that and the recognition and the parent's support, because it does, it takes a lot of support for that. Also, I'm very excited about our PBIS awards, as well as our governors, Thomas Edison Award winners and STEM. So the other thing I wanted to quickly mention is this week, we received, or last week, we received the release of the report cards, and we'll have a little bit more of a presentation by Kim Tensley, our assistant superintendent, a little bit later. But I just want to mention that it's all different, and she'll probably go into it a little bit. So now they're using stars. So in five years, they'll use something else. It's kind of the MO. But right now, they're going to use stars, and so five stars is the maximum. There are, they measured, there's actually six areas, but only five this time, basically coming out of COVID. But we had 23 out of 25 stars, which is really fantastic. And just to give you a perspective, that puts us still in the top 5% of school districts in the state of Ohio. And so congratulations to all of our buildings and our kids. That's fantastic. And you'll get a little bit more from Kim. He'll dive a little bit deeper into that. So that's what I wanted to share.
Moving on to 7.0, public commentary. I'm going to read off a few names at a time, and if you could stand up, we're going to meet over here against the window. And as you come down, I'll call you off in groups of five. Number one will be Amber Mays. Second will be Sandy Warner. Third will be Barbara Aaron Hendricks. Jason Summons. And then Tara Burke. First up, Amber. Each presenter gets 1 minute 30 seconds. Okay, I think that is better. Thank you, Alana. Thank you. Yes, please.
I'm here to point out some of the bylaws, which I just handed you, that you are responsible for upholding, that you in fact failed to uphold. The following examples are referencing FHSD, Policy Code 0123, and the subpoints within it. Subpoint A states, "Remember that my first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of all students attending the public schools." The key word there is "all students." Welfare means the health, happiness, and fortunes of a person or group. You have blatantly ignored the welfare, the educational welfare, for all diverse students. Subpoint G states, "Encourage ongoing communications among board members, the board, students, staff, and the community." You don't even respond to the community unless you agree with their opinions. Subpoint H states, "Render all decisions based on the available facts and my independent judgment, rather than succumbing to the influence of individuals or special interest groups." This board has clearly been fully operating under the influence of special interest groups and individuals such as Christopher Rufo. You're failing to fulfill your duties as board members and therefore failing students and staff of Forest Hill School District. If you'd like to start making your wrongs right, I have two immediate requests that I ask the board to make a motion for tonight. One, hold a public forum for the board in which the community can ask questions, and the board will actually respond. And number two, please repeal your racist Culture of Kindness Resolution. If you can't do either of those, then please step down from the positions you're not qualified to do.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Sandy Warner?
Hi, I'm Sandy Warner. I'm a parent of three Forest Hill School District students. This is my first time coming to a board meeting, first time speaking at a board meeting, so I hope that you will listen to what I have to say. I have become increasingly alarmed by the state of our school district over the past few years. This board has passed Culture of Kindness Resolution that has forced teachers and staff to ignore very real, religious, cultural, and racial differences between our students. Since the passing of the resolution, a student has threatened others on a school bus, and a prominent community member posted on social media about an incident involving a student. While not directly naming the parent, using titles and initials, his followers knew who he was talking about, and in turn, the student. Two of our school board members reacted with a shocked reaction, while I feel the more appropriate response would have been to ask him to delete the post. And now, elementary students have been threatened on school property. These incidences are only a few examples of the negative effects that have occurred since the Culture of Kindness Resolution has passed. My suggestion for the board is to first repeal this resolution. As a community of parents, students, Forest Hill staff, and along with the board and the superintendent, we need to put our focus on bullying. Kids and parents need to know this behavior is not acceptable, not just at school, but in society.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. Barbara Aaron Hendricks.
My name is Barb Aaron Hendricks, and I've been a parent and volunteer at Sherwood, Nagel, and Turpin. At the last meeting, the board was presented with a petition signed by over 3,000 members of our community asking for the repeal of the July Resolution that prohibits teaching against racism, among other things. Here are comments from those community members from the petition. Quote, "This will have devastating effects on our wonderful school district in terms of quality of education, as well as the mental health of our students." Quote, "It divides our community, hurts our children, and exposes the district to legal risks we cannot afford to ignore." Quote, "Culture of kindness is a misnomer. That's not what this is. Anything that prohibits anti-racism is racist." Quote, "Maybe if we can acknowledge differences and talk about them, there will be less of a bullying issue." Quote, "This is not okay. It's not representative of what the kids, teachers, administration, parents, and community believe in." Quote, "I'm proud to sign this petition. This is a fight for the soul of Anderson Township and our property values." Quote, "I think the board has made a grave error with their Culture of Kindness Resolution." Quote, "I went to Forest Hill School District and want better for future generations." Speaking for myself now, I encourage you to read all of the comments from the petition and repeal the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Simmons?
Hello, my name is Jason Simmons, and I have a student in Forest Hill School District. And I'd like to talk about belonging, or a lack of belonging, rather, that is at the heart of this Culture of Kindness Resolution. By explicitly stating differences in race, socioeconomic status, religion, gender identity, sex, and sexual preference, which itself is an outdated and offensive term, so please do your research before you discriminate in the future, ethnicity or culture, when you say these things can't be discussed or considered as part of the curriculum, it's not only wildly ignorant, it also implicitly tells students of color, students representing the LGBTQ community, and their allies, and students of different nationalities and cultures, that you do not belong. Expecting teachers to quote, "Provide a comprehensive education on America's history that neither sanitizes the past nor denies the possibility of moral progress," is ironic, because this resolution reeks of a lack of understanding of history in an effort to completely whitewash what our children learn in schools. This resolution is akin to Separate But Equal, or Don't Ask, Don't Tell. It says to our students, "You can attend our schools and live in our community, but these are our schools, and this is our community. We'll include you, but you don't belong." Given the lack of diversity in our schools as it is, this resolution will ensure that our children will grow up ignorant to history, culture, and diversity. Ignorance sows hate. Children aren't born to hate. It's something that they're taught. And if we're not careful, they may grow up and run for school board to deprive future generations of the same diversity education they were denied. So for these reasons, I call on the board to immediately repeal the Culture of Kindness Resolution.
Thank you. I'm going to call up the next five speakers first, before we continue. Hannah Smith. Allison. Last name Paz Wysowski. Are you here? Can you raise your hand? Okay. Jeff Nye. Kimberly Althoff. And Dan Lunny. Okay, we'll resume with Tara, Ms. Burke.
Good evening, board members and administrators. First, I'd like to begin with a heartfelt thank you to all of the wonderful educators in this district who made an impact on my kids and so many of our kids, some of whom are here tonight. My student, I'm very proud, is a senior who was among those who are recognized tonight as a National Merit Commended student. He worked hard, but so did every single one of his educators. They got to know him as an individual. They got to know what made him tick. They knew what he's passionate about, what his interests were. They knew when to push him, and they helped him to identify his own learning styles, his strengths, his weaknesses, and they modeled empathy and understanding for all of his peers. This was possible because his teachers did not shy away from focusing on him as an individual, and each of his peers as individuals. Yes, indeed, their identity. What would his experience have looked like if the 13 years he spent in Forest Hill's classrooms had been dictated by the board's July Resolution that bans teachers from discussing, quote, "identity"? My son plans to go to a large university, pre-med, marching band, all good things. How is it going to go if he explains to his admissions counselor that his school district bans teaching anti-racism?
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Hannah Smith?
Hi, my name's Hannah Smith, and I'm a senior at Turpin. Last time I was here, I got choked up and emotional, because for me, diversity is emotional. Board members, you have taken away the opportunity to learn about diversity in the classroom. Because of your actions, in order to learn about things I feel are crucial and important, I have to look beyond the school. I spoke in Columbus for Honesty in Ohio Education. I've become a part of their organization. I have plans to start a Diversity and Cultural Awareness Club at Turpin, although it's nearly impossible to find a teacher to sponsor the club, because you've scared most of them off. I should not have to fight for my education, the education I want and deserve. You have not prepared me. I've not been given the tools I need to communicate and understand people of different cultures and different backgrounds. Why is diversity so scary to you that you have to remove it from our schools? Are you scared to prepare students for the cultural shock they will experience after leaving the Anderson bubble? How do I prepare myself for college outside of Anderson without any guidance from my school? Diversity is real life. You claim you want to educate us traditionally. Your traditional world no longer prepares me for the real world that I will become a part of. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Allison?
Hello, my name is AJ Pazekowski, and I am a junior at Turpin High School. I am also very white. This may cause you, board members, to wonder why I'm speaking to you today. Why would someone like me be so concerned about something that has nothing to do with me? You would be right about that. I don't have to be, I don't have to worry about being racially discriminated against. I am white. But my friends do, and my peers. I tend to wonder how my friends can make it through a day. What gives them the strength to keep going, with them constantly getting called names and slurs, not to mention the racial profiling? I think now is a good time to mention that I am also bisexual. Due to me having a sexuality other than straight, this has led to quite a few people feeling offended, among other things. I have received messages wishing death upon me, verbal threats of violence, dirty looks, and other negative reactions. If this is what happens to someone like me who does something as simple as being attracted to both men and women, I can only imagine how much worse it is for someone who doesn't fit a white kid's normal cookie-cutter person role. So I am here today to ask each and every one of you to look at the children being affected by this, the children asking you for help and for change. And then I ask you to have enough empathy and decency to look inside yourselves and ask, "Do children really deserve to go through this, through the isolation and the bullying leading to possible suicide, all because they're not white and straight like us?" The final question I wish to ask is this. Wouldn't the education of these topics produce positive effects, like less bullying, more tolerance, less isolation, and overall just producing decent members to society from our schools? Thank you.
Jeff Nye.
Hi, Jeff Nye. I have two points to make to the board today. First, I've heard this board say on multiple occasions that you guys have a communication problem, and you're right about that. The only way to solve it is to communicate with the public. I think the board should hold public question and answer sessions, so we can have a dialogue. We're here trying to engage with you. It's always going one direction. You're not engaging back with us. Only you can make it a dialogue. The second point, I have here Larry Hook's affidavit from the anti-racism litigation, and he says that the resolution has no effect on any policy, guideline, or curriculum in the district. I hope the board is listening when he tells you that. So some questions I have for the board, that I hope you will answer in a public session at some point, is if there is no educational and operational purpose to the resolution, that's your advice from your handpicked superintendent, why did you pass it? How does it help our students, and why won't you repeal it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nye. Kimberly Althoff?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Capel. I'm going to take Dan Looney and my time today. My family has lived in this township for 39 years. I was here long before you, and my family will be here long after you. All of my family, my children, myself, my siblings, we've all attended Forest Hills schools. And over the weekend, my son got doxxed by Andrew Pappas in an incident that happened in the safety of a school. And Linda Hasfield and Katie Stewart not only interacted with that post, they failed to report it. I was lucky. I spent 13 blissful years in Anderson Township. I wish that our children got to be blissfully unaware of the hate and propaganda that has taken over our community because of this school board and Andrew Pappas. Instead, they have been inundated by national and local news articles from their school board, which strip them of their diversity day because you all look the same up there, don't you? I'm an Anderson lifer, and I've been very vocal against this board and the fascists in this community. I've taken an onslaught of slander, lies, and threats from this board and their supporters for over a year now. I overlooked it as a price to pay to fight for the township that I love. But last weekend, I get to see that post sent from my mother. My mother, who you guys are looking at right now, who you supported a post who doxed her grandson. School boards should not be political, and children should be safe in this community no matter who their parents disagree with. I reached out to Katie and Linda. They blocked me. Bob Bibb had already blocked me because he doxed me and posted my work a year ago. What does the bottom of the barrel look like for these zealots now that our children are fair game? Mind you, Bob Bibb and Dr. Rasmussen are the only ones that have children in this community, and these two women violated my child and his privacy. And I bet you guys call yourself God-fearing women.
Yeah, I can go ahead and do that. So I'll call the next five. Katie Quell. Nora Burke Wagner. Who are you trading with, please? Bethany Smith? Okay.
It's been slammed and thrown, so it may not work now.
It was dropped.
It was slammed on the podium.
My name is Bethany Smith, and two of my three children attend Summit Elementary School. And I'm here today to express my concern and heartbreak over the way Superintendent Larry Hook handled the disturbing incident that happened at Summit Elementary on Friday. My son and his friends, all sixth graders at Summit, were hanging out when unprovoked another child from Summit approached them with threatening and very discriminatory words. When a child present challenged him to leave, he grabbed her inappropriately, and other students then engaged and asked him to leave. It was not an argument. It was a verbal provocation from one child to a group of other children, protecting themselves. When the child left and returned, he stowed an airsoft gun which closely resembled a firearm in his waistband and engaged in behaviors and statements that threatened those children. And they fled, asked for help, and called the police. My reason for bringing this attention to the community is rooted in my frustration and the inappropriate disproportionate response by the administration. The police found enough evidence in cause to file serious charges against the child before the superintendent released the safety notice, and this community should have been informed. My intent to here today is to let my son and his friends know that I believe them and I support them. The district's safety notice issued on the 18th falls very short of the district's responsibility to both student safety and parent notification. Ironically, the one that you issued on Sunday, to use your own words, is mentioning, "If you see something, say something," should have been what was released after that happened on Friday.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Nora Burke Wagner. I'm a longtime parent in the district. I have two high schoolers now professionally. I'm an assistant dean at the University of Cincinnati College of Law. I'm concerned about the resolution silencing teachers and limiting our students' curriculum for all of the reasons that have already been shared and a few more. Specifically, I wrote to Ms. Jonas this summer asking about the impact of the resolution on our AP status. Could you please talk tonight during your time about the impact of the resolution on our maintaining AP status? If you could answer that tonight, I think that the audience would be very appreciative. When resolutions like the one here popped up, began popping up around the country, the college board made a loud announcement that it would remove AP status from schools operating under such restrictions. So for example, a spokesperson said, "AP U.S. government requires teaching Martin Luther King's letter from a Birmingham jail." How does a teacher do that without teaching anti-racism? The censorship the college board is so concerned about is happening here. In March, Ms. Jonas and Ms. Hosfeld called for an investigation of an AP human geo teacher who taught a lesson on redlining and outlawed discriminatory housing and real estate practice. This is exactly the type of thing, this investigation, is exactly the type of thing that is going to cause us to get our AP status revoked.
Thank you. Next up is Kimberly Althoff.
Good evening. Last week, I was notified that several members of our school board have a plan to sell Anderson High School by the end of the year, forcing all high school students to the Turpin Mercer campus, moving 700 Mercer students, and requiring redistricting in all five remaining elementary schools. As you can imagine, many things have to come together, including acquisition of land and an NCA, a public-private partnership, a move that requires the district to rely on tax revenue generated from the new development site. If that revenue falls short to deliver expected funds, the district risks losing other assets. Successfully executing such an enormous project can take years. Our board wants it done by the end of 2025, after their terms expire. With reliable rumors that none have any intention of running again, the only reasonable conclusion is to destroy our district and cut and run. There is no backup plan. If the deal to sell Anderson High School moves forward, there is also no turning back. Selling a building without community consensus is deliberate sabotage. Community members from all across the political spectrum have been reaching out to us to share examples and evidence of shameful acts by board members Hausfeld, Bibb, and Jonas, who community members believe have conspired to hide, deny, and conceal valuable information from public scrutiny to avoid legally required transparency under Ohio Revised Code 122.2. Until last night, when community members intervened, the board planned a blindside, recessing to executive session prior to adjournment.
Thank you, Ms. Althoff. Next up is Sarah Sudcamp. Ms. Sudcamp? Ms. Sudcamp, please. Sean was not actually in the list of speakers for the next five. It's Sarah Sudcamp, Katie Quell, and Don Nelson.
You know what? I don't think it matters what order we go in. It's all important.
Excuse me.
My comment is on the potential consolidation on behalf of both staff and community concerns. First, in terms of community impact on possible consolidation. Should we consolidate schools? There'll be significant impact to the traffic surrounding the schools during drop-off and pickup. This would require infrastructure funding to mitigate the bottlenecks due to increased traffic surrounding the schools, not to mention the potential environmental impact to Clough Creek. To make all of this happen, you're going to need 2.8 millage levy for permanent improvements on top of the much-needed four-to-six millage operating levy. If you go this route or make it a bond issue, how do you plan on paying off new bonds while we're still paying off the last one? What would happen if the district can't pay those debts? What would be the impact to staff who might be under threat of redundancy in case of consolidation? What would be the impact on morale and the relationship between the teachers association? Additionally, there's concern that you brought in administration, including facility manager Eckert, Kim Pence, and Rob Fellows in discourting the Open Meetings Act. I implore you to work with the community and provide more transparency on your plans.
Thank you. Katie Quell? Okay, hold on a second. Were you not Sarah Sudcamp?
That's Katie. I'm Sarah.
You're Sarah, okay. So I was under the impression that was Sarah. So you are Sarah Sudcamp now.
I am Sarah Sudcamp.
Okay, thank you.
So we had hoped to give you a little bit more information before I spoke, but I'll go anyways. We understand that our district is in a tough financial situation, and you're trying to come up with solutions. We also know that the current plan could, if the tax revenue is not satisfied by the NCA bonds, leave the district without any high school property at all. So if you can't pay it, you lose both schools. That's not what you want to leave as your legacy. It will ruin our school district and the community. So what can you do? First, you need to focus on the kids. Second, you need an updated financial study, an updated ROI, a strong understanding of the ROI with any proposed project, community involvement in the development of a plan, guaranteed money, not potential dollars, to fund the school consolidation. Okay? In closing, I am here to put you on notice of potential litigation, and as such, you and everyone involved in this project must preserve all physical and electronically stored information, copies and backups, as defined by Rule 34 of the Federal Rules of Several Procedure. Procedure, okay? So, thank you for your time. Please check out AdvocateFHSD.org.
Thank you. I'll call up the five remaining speakers. We have Erica Chizik. Maxwell Capel. Sean Martin. And Kristin Kalonek. Is Don Nelson here? Don Nelson? Up next, Erica Chizik.
Two weeks ago, there was a fight at Turpin High School. Why the fight happened is no business of mine. These were not my kids, and I'm not an administrator. What is my business is what happened after the fight, when a former trustee decided that he would put his kid's information on his Facebook page. And at this point, he exposed this child to hundreds of opinions about this child and this child's family, so that the trustee could make fun of this kid's parents. I can't say what kind of pain causes the former trustee to lash out at women and children on his Facebook page regularly, but what I can say is that I expect board members like Katie Stewart and President Hausfeld to behave in a manner adult enough to protect our kids. And if they see someone on any social media stating that they would harm a child or F them up, I expect they would intervene in some manner, reach out to the trustee personally, or report it to authorities as appropriate. We have put you in charge of the care of these kids, so it is my request again, Superintendent Hook, that these sorts of behaviors be addressed with Forest Hills Human Resources, and they be disciplined appropriately. I know you told me that the board are your bosses, but I read the Social Media Policy 7544, and it states the board has given you the power to set rules regarding internet policies. I suggest all of us be very aware of who we vote for going forward, because I have a feeling we're going to need pro-public school legislators at a state level very soon.
Thank you, Ms. Chizik.
Hi, my name's Max, and I've lived in this community for like 20 years, a long time. I was lucky enough for many of those years to never have to worry about a school board.
Sir, please, if you could address the podium and address the board?
Give me my time back.
Please.
Give me my time back, first of all.
Okay, I can ask you to go back to the podium, and we'll give you some time back. Please address the board. Thank you.
I was lucky enough over all those years to not have to worry about what the school board was doing. And over these past couple of years, the way that this community has been publicly embarrassed by the ineptitude of the behaviors of some of these individuals is revolting to me. Even more so when I sit here and I see faces in this audience that have worked so well with my kid, my kids, multiple kids and multiple faces and a bunch of people in here that I know do good work. And I am so sorry that you have to labor under this situation where we're somehow pretending that diversity, equity, and inclusion are scary buzzwords and not like the direction of the modern business community. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Capel.
The community deserves a voice when discussing consolidation and redistricting. We are all concerned about how this will affect our lives. For instance, we moved here to start a family a decade ago because we were impressed with the district as it was. Now, we are afraid that redistricting will force our daughter out of the elementary school she loves. She has archer pride through and through. We live just on the outskirts of the area of Sherwood, so will she have to go to Maddox when you redistrict? She would be heartbroken. What will people think about the inevitable cold and unsafe learning trailers parked outside the elementary schools to accommodate the overflow? What about the full-day pre-K and full-day kindergarten? Will those even exist? Will the children with disabilities be displaced? The ones that go here if you get rid of this building? Class sizes is a huge concern. There are multiple studies out there that prove that larger class sizes increase stress in students due to the higher expectations and less individual attention. Diverse students feel even less seen, and the school pride and morale takes a huge dip when you can just disappear in the crowd. Large class sizes also have been proven to increase school violence. This is not the direction we should be headed in. Let's talk about sports. Consolidating schools means less spots on the football team. Chances of making the soccer team are cut in half, and all that increased competition for spots on a team can lead to more stress and more depression and feeling left out.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Kristin Kalonek?
Hi. On behalf of Advocate FHSD, I want to finish the conversation here around consolidation. Community members, as Kim mentioned, from all political points, have been reaching out to share with us the examples and evidence of misbehavior and shameful acts by board members Hosfeld, Bibb, and Jonas, who community members believe have conspired to hide and obfuscate valuable information from public scrutiny, which avoid legally required transparency under Ohio Revised Code 122.2, which I should remind the two women who yelled at me earlier, states all regular and special meetings are public meetings and therefore subject to ORC 122.2. Until last night, when community members intervened, the board planned- Until last night, when community members intervened, the board planned a blindside, survivor-style, recessing to executive session prior to adjournment, in the hopes the audience leaves, so that upon return, they may take a vote to authorize the sale of Anderson High School and the consolidation of Mercer. Board members have engaged former board members, Mr. Rich Newman and Ms. Julie Bissender. The idea has been their passion project since 2010, when they were first fined themselves for violating sunshine laws in their roles as board members. Mr. Newman, a current employee of the development firm Elevar, has assisted the board in avoiding public scrutiny here by acting as a go-between and text messages and meetings for all involved. Once the board votes, the decision begins the process to auction away the high school with no community insights, no updated return on investment analysis, and no protection for our students.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate you guys. Next up will be 8.0 Business Operations.
Thank you. Uh, I do believe this will begin the consent agenda for the evening. At this time, we just have one item from the Business Operations Department. It is a resolution to adopt, for the board to adopt and authorize the Southwest Ohio Educational Purchasing Council to advertise for bids and receive bids on behalf of school bus purchases. Are there any questions on this? At this time, the superintendent and treasurer recommend that the board adopt a resolution to participate and authorize the Southwest Ohio Educational Purchasing Council to advertise for and receive bids for school purchases of buses. Thank you.
Thank you, John. 9.0 Human Resources?
Well, good evening to the board. Um, I would just like to spend a moment and thank a number of individuals we have on the Agenda Item A here under the Human Resources Report for retirements. We have 12 individuals here for approval this evening. Incredible people who've been with the organization, as few as three years and as many as 34 years. So, I, I could speak at length about each of them, but I will kind of mention by category. We have two administrators, Mr. Dave Cammer, 19 years at Anderson High School, and Ms. Rhonda Hutton, who has been at central office as an EMIS coordinator for three years. So 12 years collectively for our administrators. We have seven certified staff here for approval for their retirement, and from Anderson High School, Pam Pendry, 33 years in the district, Pam. Jeff Rodriguez, longtime science teacher, 31 years, Anderson High School. At Nagel Middle School, we have Jeff Geisting, who's been in a couple buildings, Anderson and Nagel, for 34 years. Mary Moore, 33 years at Nagel, and Rose Arnell, who has been in the district 26 years at Nagel there. We have Rhonda Russo, also eight years at Mercer, and Chris Bartel, 33 years at Sherwood Elementary. So, um, I guess that is seven certified staff and 198 years collectively between them, and that deserves absolutely a big round of applause. And I wish it weren't so, but wait, there's more. We still have three classified staff members. Lawrence Casa Grande, 21 years, is a bus driver for us. Suzie Geisting, who has served as an intervention specialist and a paraprofessional in the district, 20 years, and Darren Wilson, 34 years as a custodian at Summit Elementary. We wish all of them, all 12 of them, and the 295 years collectively among the 12, all the best in this final year of theirs, and thank them greatly for their service to our students, to our community. And the rest of my report is attached. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The superintendent recommends that the board approve the Human Resources Report as presented. Thank you.
No questions? 10.0 Teaching and Learning Curriculum.
All right, good evening. I've got four field trips that I'd like to propose. The first one is item 10.1, the Anderson High School DECA Field Trip. DECA is part of a curriculum that our students who are in our entrepreneurship and business classes take. They're looking to go to New York for a nationwide DECA conference, 21 students, six chaperones, and there was some fundraising to be done for this one as well. So that is item 10.1. The next one, item 10.2, it says overnight field trip request for Anderson High School. That should say Turpin High School. It's the Turpin Dance Team. The Turpin Dance Team qualified to go to Nationals in Orlando in the spring, so that is the next one. We have 13 students and two chaperones that we're proposing for that one. Next is item 10.3. This is another overnight field trip to New York City. This time, it's the Anderson Choir, 75 students and seven chaperones. Looks like a fantastic opportunity for our students, riverboat cruise, two Broadway musicals, and a chance to sing at a couple of cathedrals in New York City. And then the last one is item 10.4. This covers the high school possible trips to OHSA tournaments. So every year at this time, we propose all of the approval for the overnight trips. Since we won't know as the season goes on who will qualify for state tournaments and state finals, we try to get them all approved ahead of time so that it's not on a week-by-week basis. So those four things I am recommending, or it is recommended that the board approve. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, good evening. As you saw earlier, we have lots of things to celebrate here in Forest Hills with the achievement of our students. And this past Thursday, we did receive our report card for, from the State of Ohio. This is based on our state testing through end-of-course exams, the state tests that happen at the end of the year of each school year, and it's one measure, but like all other things, we've, we've done a great job. I wanted to go ahead and go to that next slide, where, again, as Mr. Hook presented earlier, there are six components that we will be evaluated on, starting next year. This year, we only looked at five of the six, so there were a total of 25 stars that we had available. So, as he noted, we are using a star system as opposed to the ABCD method that we've used in the past. It feels kind of like we're rating hotels at this point, but anyway. We, um, we do not have an overall rating. It is considered that next year, they will start looking at an overall rating, but right now, we're just looking at those five components, and we earned 23 out of those 25 stars. Out of 607 schools in the State of Ohio, public schools, we are still in the top 5% of achievement. Last year, I presented some data around the students that we serve. I thought it was worth noting for us last year with, in the previous two years, with some of the things with COVID, it was important for us to kind of come back to look at where we are currently. Last year, we had seen a pretty significant increase of students who'd been identified in an economic disadvantage. That percent was over 13% at that time. We're starting to see that our enrollment is returning to kind of the pre-COVID data points that we had previously. We have not had significant changes in some of our subgroups over time, but I do want to make sure to note that the number of students with disabilities, with low incidence students with disabilities, so some of our more intense needs, that number is increasing, as well as an increase in number of students who are coming to us who are English language learners. When you look at our overall achievement, we did receive a five out of five for our district. A three-star rating would have meant that we met expectations. So a five-star means that we significantly exceeded the state expectation. This typically is something that we would compare to performance index. And so the performance index is where we measure the test results of every student, not just proficient and higher, it's all students. And so they use an interesting formula. Steve Trailer, I don't believe he's here this evening, I'm sure he's home crunching numbers right now, because that's what he loves to do, and he's been a huge asset as we, as we drill down. This right here is our trends, it's a reflection of our trends over time. Black, green, those are your advanced and accelerated students. Orange is proficient. The other colors are students who are in basic or limited. So we, again, if you look at the trend over time, and you can't, it's hard to see, 2018, 2022 is the last one here on the right. We are, again, demonstrating pre-COVID learning achievement, and even showing more students at advanced and accelerated levels than we have previously. So when there was fear of learning loss, we are just not seeing the learning loss that some people thought we might experience and other school districts did experience. What I think is worth noting too, when we really dig into our performance data, our average scores in Forest Hills are well within the accomplished and advanced range across the board. So for example, our fifth grade students in science scored the average score of 750 points, which is in the accomplished range. So we have very high achieving students, and we have a lot to be very proud of. Something I want to point out that has been a goal for us as a district for a long period of time has been in the area of gap closing. This is a huge success. One of the reasons why I came to Forest Hills was to really work with our different departments and looking at how do we ensure that we close the gap and really ensure that every student is growing. So this is something that I'm very proud of, I'm very proud of our teachers, I'm very proud of our principals, and the work that we've done here. So, the gap closing component shows how well schools are meeting the performance expectations for students in all of our core subjects, but we're also looking at how do we increase language proficiency, reduce chronic absenteeism, identify gifted students, ensure that we're making sure that not only our struggling students, but our gifted students are having their needs met. So last year, we did not receive a rating, but we, we did know from looking at data that we still had some areas to work on specifically in the area of students with economic disadvantage and our students with special needs. So each year, you can see where the red dot represents what our goal for the year was, and every subgroup, our students significantly exceeded the expectations that the state set for us. So I'm very, very proud of that. Another factor that we often need to consider, and this is something that, again, last year, and the past two years, we've seen a lot of mobility of students, so just because I printed, presented it last year, I wanted to give you an update on this as well. Within a typical school year, Forest Hills were pretty consistent. We typically see 3% of our student population either enroll into or out of our schools. So during COVID, we saw overall 5% of our students moving in and out, with approximately 18% of those students being our English language learners. That still, we're still seeing a significant number of our English learners moving in and out. We just know that transience has an impact on consistency of instruction, so this is something that we're always being mindful of and something to consider. And so we know that that's something that we just need to continue to support as we move on. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. All right. I'm going to spend some time talking about literacy. This graph represents, the red is our district, blue represents similar districts in the State of Ohio that look like us in terms of finances, demographics, size. Yellow is the rest of the state. So when, when we're reviewing our stars, we actually, too, math, I'm sorry, is on the left, English is on the right. I want to spend some time really getting into the literacy component, because this is something new that we've not been measured on before. Early literacy, it used to be part of the Improving At-Risk K-3 Readers, if you want to go to that next slide. Okay. So in the State of Ohio, there's 21 districts that look a lot like us as far as demographics, finances, size, and so it looks like we sit right in the middle. This component, there's several things that they're looking at here. They're looking at proficiency, which we've talked about already. It's looking at promotion, which is how many of our third graders leave and go to fourth grade without being retained. But it also looks at a screener that we do in kindergarten when our students come and arrive here to us. So, you're wondering probably, why are we in the middle and not at the top? So if you go to the next slide, only about half of the schools of those 21 that we were looking at actually end up going through another screening process that the state takes a look at. And so it's because of the screener that we give in kindergarten to assess literacy readiness. Out of the 21 people, or 21 schools that go through this, we're still in the fourth as far as demonstrating improvement with our readers. But because are some of our students, they are coming in lower, but they're progressing at a high rate, so that's where, it's just a third measure that we go through. I think that because we are in the middle, we have used math in the past, we have shifted to eye-ready. I anticipate that we're going to see some changes, because I do not believe that's a reflection of our teachers, and I do not believe that's a reflection of concerns that we have. I think it's a reflection of, we're not necessarily measuring apples to apples in different school districts. I do want to point this out. I'm very proud of our local school districts. If you want to go to the next slide. Out of these 21 that I talked about before, this is kind of looking at the achievement piece, there's only two school districts in this local area who look like us in terms of size and all of those things we've talked about. Sycamore and Loveland are the only two of the 21 that might show up here, and so you can see my little S for Sycamore, L for Loveland. I note it because I'm proud of them. Loveland had five stars out of five, which is fantastic. I'm proud of them. I live there, by the way, so. But even though they received a five out of five in early literacy, because they're, again, measures are different, we actually outperformed them in achievement. So there's so many different factors to consider that it's kind of hard to read. And again, I think that because we are doing some different things with assessments next year and reporting, I expect that we're going to have five out of five as well. Again, just want to show you kind of, as we move forward with eighth grade, you again see the district, similar districts and state, where we again hold our own very well. We with math, we see a dip there, but because of some of the work that Bob Buck, our math teachers, have done over the past couple of years to really look at advanced pathways for math, I anticipate that this is going to also increase as well. And then when you look at the high school comparison, this just gives you again, red is us, blue are comparative comparison districts, and then yellow is the state. So we are continuing to outperform and meet standards. The other area where we received a four was the area of progress, and I felt like this was probably best explained, because progress, we had a four, and how do you have the score that you have and then have a four out of five in progress? It doesn't make sense. You've met gap closing, you've met all the other things, what happened here? Again, this is a sample of one of our elementaries. They don't like to be picked on, so I picked randomly, well, alphabetically here. So, if you take a look, black and green are your advanced accelerated kids. Orange are your proficient kids. So we have a very small, small number of students who are struggling, and we're still working to make sure that they are proficient. What's very difficult in any high-performing school district is that when you have this level of almost 100% of your students that are proficient or more, it's hard to show progress when you're already working at the top. So, that's where that score sometimes doesn't look as high as we want it to. We're doing really well, that's why. We're doing really well, that's why. So things that we're going to continue to do, we are going to continue to have laser focus on our state standards. We are not only aligned to our state standards, but more than ever, we've been aligned to each other within our school districts. We spend a lot of time within our PLCs and working together and collaborating, looking at best practices, including supports that allow students to take those advanced math offerings, giving them students, giving students access to advanced science, to different pathways. We're looking at experience shifts and how to, how to really look at education outside of the four classroom walls. All staff, all of our staff have participated in gifted training and are considered highly qualified in the area of gifted instruction. This is training that occurs annually. As soon, I teased about Steve earlier, but as soon as we got results this summer, he started doing an item analysis to look at like where are some of those areas that we collectively maybe didn't get as high as we wanted to as a school district. So curriculum wise, what are some things that we need to do? So there's just a lot of work that's happening behind the scenes to keep, keep things going. But I'm very proud of all of our work and I'm just happy to share that with you. Do you have any questions? Okay.
No questions. Thank you, Kim. Item 11.1, Hamilton County Educational Services Center contract for services.
Good evening again. 11.1 is our Hamilton County Educational Service Center contract for service. You might remember back in July, I presented a large Hamilton County contract with an addendum that noted services being provided to our non-public IHM located in our district. That is what this revision is for. So this is a motion to approve this revision, and I'll try to explain this so it, it is confusing. There is an additional $4,585 being added to this contract so that they can serve students with physical therapy services. And that has been added to this particular contract. These are Part B special education federal funds that are used. These are not general district funds. They come directly through our Part B. And so there was an allocation that has been set aside for particularly this and it covers this increase. So I just wanted to make sure I explain that because it is quite confusing sometimes. It is recommending, recommended the board approve participation in this revised special instructional services to IHM as presented. Any questions?
No questions? Approval for the consent? We don't until after? We don't mind?
All right. Nobody need 12.1, made treasurer's report too.
Because that's treasurer's report. Okay. 12.8 treasurer's report.
Okay, moving on to the treasurer's report now. Beginning with agenda item A, you see the donations that we have received over the past month and those totaled $9,200. And of course, you can view the specifics of those donations on your board docs. As always, item B is a statement of board accounts, which presents all fund activity for the current fiscal year, which of course, for us has just been the last two months. So July and August activity is presented on item B. Item C presents the general fund, our five-year forecast fund receipts for the month of August. And as you see there, August is typically a higher cash flow month because we're still getting our summer property tax receipts. So at this point in the year, revenues are tracking where we, where we would expect them to be at this point in the year. Items D and E present the expenditures for the general fund. And of course, expenditures are very stable and even throughout the month. So we can look at 16.7% of our fiscal year's complete. And at this point, we have spent only 15% of our appropriations. Of course, we have another 10.06 committed for future expenditures in the coming months. So again, expenditures are tracking within the five-year forecast and where we would expect them to be at this point in the year. For your view, the August 31st bank reconciliations and investments are presented in agenda items F. And agenda items G lists the permanent appropriations by fund for our current fiscal year 2223. These appropriations are set, are set within the limits of our current five-year forecast. And as required by the state, this appropriation measure will be, is being passed by October 1st of this school year and will be filed with county auditor. We certify that these appropriations are necessary to operate the district throughout our current school year, the 202223 school year. I respectfully request that the board approve the items 12.1A through 12.1G as part of the consent emotion, which begins with item 8.1.
I'll make a motion to approve the action items 8.1 through 12.1 as presented.
I'll second.
We have a first by Mrs. Jonas, second by Mrs. Stewart. Any questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostel?
Yes.
Thank you for your attention to these items.
Thank you, Ms. Proffer. 13.1, board discussion.
Yes, I have, I have some things I'd like to discuss. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all of the awards that went out tonight, teachers, students, everybody in Forest Hills. It was a lot of positive things happening tonight. And then I'd like to talk about some of the bullying issues we've had here. As parents, we want to make sure our children never experience distress. But we have to raise humans that have some sort of tolerance for discomfort and distress. We can't rescue them from that. We've got to teach them how to handle it and deal with it. Kids can make a difference by telling an adult about bullying that they see. Kids need to know that they can be, I'm talking. If you would like to make a disturbance, you can be escorted out, but I am going to talk.
Katie, you did not ask your mother to leave last time she did that. Please, stop. Stop. Help her.
I do believe that the sheriff went over to my mother when she was here. I'm going to speak and I'm not going to be interrupted again. So thank you. Kids can make a difference by telling an adult about bullying they see. Kids need to know that they can be helpful in a bad situation if they get helped quickly. They need to stand up for the child being bullied. If you watch something happen and don't say anything, you're just as bad as doing the thing yourself. There has been a noticeable uptick in student fights and physical attacks this school year, or last school year, and records show this school year isn't off to a great start. These issues we are seeing are a direct result of the lingering effects of how the pandemic was handled, not to mention an increase in disruptions and misconduct.
Excuse me. Can we let her, let the board member finish, please? If you don't, then you could.
Really?
She has.
The heightened stress isolation and mental health needs. Can we do something about all the distractions in here?
I'm done.
Thank you.
It's your fault. It's your fault.
Yes, it's my fault.
No, it's not. Sorry.
The heightened stress isolation and mental health needs have had a lasting effect and trauma on our students. Sadly, our students are lacking coping skills and strategies to help them through these trying times. I know we are trying to take proactive steps for our last board meeting, but I still don't believe we're doing enough. While this school is not the parent and should not step over the parents, we want every child to succeed and grow in our schools. We need to let our teachers teach and lessen the distractions in the classroom. We need to take a harder stance on discipline and ensure all students are safe. We shouldn't, we shouldn't be surviving any school in our district, we should be thriving. Teachers are too busy babysitting and maintaining behavior instead of teaching, and they need more support. The safety of our students is not privileged information. I would like to form an action plan to move forward to address these issues. I would also like to see participation of both students and parents, and maybe we can look at other neighboring schools to see what they are doing to combat this. I'd like to read that bullying is seeking to harm, intimidate, or coerce. Intimidate is to frighten or overall, especially in order to make them do what one wants. And harassment is subject to aggressive pressure or intimidation and making repeated small attacks. So I would like to see us moving forward and, and doing more, whether that's, again, putting together an action plan within the community or looking at our neighboring schools. But something, something needs to give. And that was one of the things I wanted to talk about.
Thank you, Katie. I would like to address a few things related to the public comments and just various emails that we've been getting. But first, I want to start by apologizing to the Capell family, namely their, and first and foremost, their child. I, I have said this publicly to people in email, and I will say it here again. Our position on this board adds legitimacy to anything we click a like on or a wow emoji or whatever. It is, I don't care if someone does not like me, their child deserves every single ounce of respect that they should get. They do. I see my former colleague in the audience there. Congratulations to your namesake. I used to tell him, Forrest, you know, the one thing that makes me the most ragey? When kids are hurt. And that is, I'm not, I'm, I'm not a crier, but I want to cry thinking about this stuff because kids, we don't, you don't know what they're going through. You don't know. And we don't know what is going on in your family. And we don't know if your child is struggling with anything. I know this week, I saw one of my neighbors send, a grown adult, you know, send an email to one of my other neighbors mocking her child who has autism. And then, and, and, and these are people with kids in our district. What I'm saying is, if he came to me and said, this is happening to my child, then I would do everything in earthly, in my power to help protect that child. But the adults in the room have got to take some accountability and responsibility, and an apology goes a long way.
I would love one. I would love one immediately. Love it.
Thank you for yours.
Yes, thank you.
There's a lot of things that are just not necessary. They're just not necessary. Hannah Smith was one of the speakers tonight. I don't know if she's still here. There, oh, there she is. Hi. I just want to tell you how proud I am of you and to see, see the news of you, you know, speaking at the state house. Your generation, I just said this to my college students this week, your generation gives me so much hope because I really believe that y'all care about each other. And I, and I firmly believe that y'all care about each other in a way that we adults don't seem to care for each other. And, and you have so much to be proud of and just know that we're cheering you on. I, I also want to take a minute to discuss the AP status because somebody did ask if we would address that. So everything I'm going to say is my understanding. So I, this was one of the main concerns that I have had. I've had this concern before this resolution came up because of potential litigation at the state, not litigation, excuse me, legislation at the state house that might come up as well. Because if the state pushes something through like this, and the college board has already said what it would do. There were comments, I don't know how true or not, but that two board members and it wanted an investigation of, actually, it is true because I saw it in the, in the lawsuit basically, an investigation of a teacher who was teaching about redlining. AP curriculum is set. So interfering with it isn't going to change it. It has, it, it is set. The college board issues licenses to, for, for schools to offer AP courses. So is this the best we can do for an AP course? Yes, because that is what the college board has said is important to this particular class and to developing strong critical thinking skills. That's just, that's just how it is. So unless it goes a step further and this board, I don't even know if we can, says, well, we don't want that class taught anymore because it mentions redlining or the one you mentioned with Martin Luther King. In that instance, yeah, then, then it's gone. If the resolution stands, then yes, we're, that is something we're going to have to address. But the AP curriculum is set. That is not, you can't just give college credit for whatever someone else wants. Like that, that's just not how it works. So for now, what I would say is, I don't like what I read about that interference. But I, I do know that AP curriculum is AP curriculum. So it's not, it's, it's not what some have painted it to be. And I am really sorry that teachers are feeling the pressure and the backlash from that because they shouldn't, they should just be able to teach. So there's that. There, there were obviously some comments about the district itself, and all I can say about that is, a lot of it is new information to me, so I don't have a comment about any of that other than to say, you gave me a lot of questions to ask. The last thing I want to say is that, and I mentioned this last week to someone in central office, and I, as I was leaving the last month, meeting last month at Mercer, I mentioned this to Bob, I said, I think we need to have a community forum. This has got to stop. We have to actually build trust. We have to work, take steps to start to regain that and to heal wounds and move forward. We have really big issues in the district, and that's where our energy should be. And if we keep saying, yes, we can do better with communication, but we don't take a single action that reflects that, then we have failed. So tonight, I want to make a motion to hold a special community forum, scheduling to be determined, but to occur before December 1st, so that the community can be heard, so that questions can be put forth in a, in a organized manner and that there can be a respectful dialogue between the board and the community. And I, maybe it's my, maybe it's a pipe dream, but I really hope that that would be a, an olive branch, if you will, a step in the right direction to start to turn the temperature down, which I know I said like 100 times at the last meeting, but, so that people feel heard. So that's, I made a motion. Anybody second that to have a special public forum with our community members? It's a shame. It is an absolute shame, an absolute shame that this community is being shut down again. This, Bob? I've repeatedly seen all of these people say that the boards need to be more transparent and say that community is a problem. But you're unwilling to have a community forum so that we can actually work on that? So it's.
No, they're taking children.
It's either, it's either we, man. You, it is, it is absolutely hypocritical. Hypocritical.
Ladies, I have an apology.
So basically, we don't want community input, we don't want community conversation. That is being loud and clear. That is being loud and clear. That's a community, community forum. Y'all, people advocated for the CAG group, and guess what? Scott Prebels made that happen. Against my will, like, I didn't want that. But, and he, and he did that knowing that, you know what, people are going to be mad and they're not going to maybe be the most, have the nicest things to say to me, but you know what? We did it.
That's how leadership works. That's how it should work. Why can't it work that way here?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is Kurt Hartman not here to tell you what to do?
So I made a motion. And it is not seconded. So take that message for what it is.
I can't second something that I don't know what the discussion's going to be about.
You don't know what the-
Excuse me, Leslie, I'm talking right now.
I can't hear you, Linda. That's what I was trying to say to you.
So, hold on a second. We already asked for a committee to be established months ago. And when Scott was around, it never happened.
A committee for what?
So that committee, you could go back and look at the, look at the board meeting.
No, you can say what, a committee for what?
We were talking about a, a business committee to talk.
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about an open community forum.
If we can try to get these committees sorted out, then I make a motion to move it.
Bob called a, Bob called a special meeting on a weekend for a Sunday night without even telling me. Like, it's that simple. It's a special public forum meeting. It's not a committee. It's nothing like that. It's not a series. It is literally a meeting like this. There is, there is a setup for how it goes, where you answer questions from the community. That's what it is. So what you're saying is, is something different.
They don't know, they skip one if they ask for the electoral.
There's, there's no second, Alana?
There's no second.
Can I make a?
That is a process. Yeah, that's one of the available processes.
Okay, Sarah has the floor. I wanted to clear up some stuff that I think we've heard tonight. When it came to the redlining investigation, I mean, I'm pretty sure that was because somebody was teaching about the 1619 project in their room. So that's why it was investigated. You wouldn't want to- Obviously, you know, talking about, okay, to clear that up. When it comes to the resolution, I heard some comments, obviously we're in pending litigation, so I just wanted to say, per the resolution, no formal changes have been made or implemented to date, so the AP classes would not be affected at all. So I guess everyone could be eased with that. When it comes to the consolidation discussion, I just wanted to say that this consolidation idea was brought to our attention because the district inherited significant financial issues due to the mismanagement of the previous board. We didn't, okay. We didn't gather this group, or, I'm, I'm talking. We didn't gather this group or form a committee. This was an idea that was brought to us, and these are their ideas, and we simply listened. We listened because this group of business leaders and thought leaders approached the district with a creative and out-of-the-box idea to solve the district financial problems. We simply listened. Nothing has been done to date, so I know there's a lot of rumors going around. Nothing's been done to date. Lastly, I wanted to, and I guess kind of on a positive note, I know we recognize and understand that there are staffing shortages, and we appreciate each and every one of our staff members who have chosen Forest Hills as their district. I know I personally wanted to say thank you to our bus drivers as you are the first and last people to interact with our students, and thank you for bringing our precious cargo to school. I wanted to say thank you to the admin assistants, building secretaries, and office aides as you are the, on the front lines every day, and we appreciate your hard work. Our teachers are amazing, paraprofessionals are amazing, and so is our support staff, as well as custodians and food service workers, and I just wanted to say thank you. You are all appreciated, and you are the foundation for what makes this school district great. So I know we have, you know, a division in the community, but at the end of the day, we've got a great district and great staff. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Sarah, Sarah, do you realize you just said that these community leaders, these business leaders, had, they wanted to talk to y'all, so we listened? That, that's what I was asking for, for the people that actually live here and pay taxes and send their kids to this school. It, it is, I mean, I can't count the amount of board meetings or I had, or work sessions where we've had to deal with things like this. And the previous board, whether you like them or not, did not run from the public. There was, there were emails. It's so mind-blowing. Did either of you have anything to say?
Anything else, Bob? There are a few things I'd like to bring up again, but did either of you want to talk again?
No.
No?
Go ahead.
I'm just going to bring one thing up with the AP status. Per the resolution, it says if it's germane to the subject being taught, then it's allowed to be taught. So you wouldn't talk about redlining and calculus, but you would talk about it in that AP class. So there is no reason to suspect that any of that would not be okay going forward, per the wording of that. I do have another question, though. There's been a lot of stuff with Title IX being on the news, and I was curious what our policies were in regards to bathrooms, locker rooms, and sports. I don't know if anybody's able to answer this question.
So according to Christopher Rufo, and I mentioned him last month and his website, this is the next line of attack, just so aware. He's very vocal with that, if, if anybody likes, I mean, I could read directly from his website and-
So one of the, the issues that I was actually wanting to bring up is that it has been brought to my attention that there are boys that are using the girls' restrooms by some of the students, and it is a concern. And I was just wondering if that is something that is going on, because I am concerned about the safety for all students in this matter. And I'm concerned about their privacy and safety as well.
Their privacy.
I'd like to make a motion that students must use bathrooms of their biological sex at birth, or they may use a single stall bathroom that are available at all schools on every floor. Did anybody want to second that? No? I wanted to make a motion that students must use the bathroom of their biological sex at birth. Or they may use a single stall bathroom that's available in every school. I want all students to be guilty.
Excuse me. No, they don't. And here you are coming after the most vulnerable kids. Excuse me. Oh my God, what is popping? Something, Colleen, please. Oh my gosh.
That sounded like a threat. Officer, that sounded like a threat. I'd like to-
So nobody wanted to second?
Who told you, Katie? Can you give us some more data, so, or perhaps y'all can? Where are kids using, boys using the girls' bathrooms? Like, to throw out a statement like that, I would need some verification from these people, not Facebook.
It was Students at Anderson that mentioned it.
So I'm, I'm getting no's that happened at, from overhead.
Well, that's why I was trying to ask for more clarification on it.
So some data would be great.
Students at Anderson had brought it to my attention, and I am trying to figure out if that's an issue or not. If it's not an issue, then we're good.
So everything that-
Table the motion.
None of it's happening, none of it, because of this.
Table the motion? Can we table the motion?
So sell your house to the-
Until further discovery. Table, table the motion until you guys can come up with them. This is definitely worth-
This district is a laughing stock.
Just look into it. Thank you, Larry. Thank you, Larry. All right, moving on to the reports of the Board of Education, 14.1 Legislative Liaison Report. There is, um, nothing to report, report on the legislative. They're actually still in session and have extended it. Sure. There's nothing to report on the legislative report. 14.2, the Forest Hills Foundation. We have Stacy Gillyard.
Good evening. Thank you to the school board for having the foundation give a report this evening. We have several exciting things to announce. Because of our record-breaking fundraising year last year, and for the generous support of our donors, we are proud to support our frontline educators and influencers, our teachers. A big thanks to the Forest Hills staff as you presented your collaborative, innovative initiatives as you continue to impact Forest Hills students. We are proud to announce that because of our loyal and committed donors, the foundation will be awarding 29 teacher grants totaling $110,000. Which will directly impact over 5,000 students. So starting next week, for all of you that are on social media, the foundation will begin our award process where we will visit teachers and surprise them with our prize patrol, as we not only award these funds to teachers, but also celebrate with the students. So stay tuned to learn more about each of these grants, the focus on student wellness, and the overall impact of belonging for our Forest Hills students. Next, for the past nine years, the Forest Hills Foundation has recognized outstanding alumni from both Anderson and Turpin High School. We received over 30 nominations, which is the largest we've actually ever received from, for the foundation, and we are thrilled to announce the 2022 distinguished alumni recipients. From Anderson High School, Dr. Christopher Kalenda, a graduate from 1970. Brittany Ruby Miller, graduate from 20, 2001. Marcus Thompson, graduated in 20, or 2002, from Anderson High School. I have a little bit about all these people, but just for the purpose of time. We will be sharing videos and photography and a ton more about all these recipients, so be sure to stay tuned for more information about each of them. And from Turpin High School, Michael Cash, Cara Kenny Canolongo, and Dr. Douglas Bettner in 1996. Congratulations to these six outstanding alumni for all of your professional and personal accomplishments. The foundation will be hosting our 10th Annual Distinguished Alumni Luncheon on Friday, October 15th, at Ivy Hills Country Club, and also the recipients will be recognized the evening, that evening, at the Turpin-Anderson football game. And lastly, who is ready to help feed families and nourish, nourish souls, because we do big things in Forest Hills? Did you know that if you donate $5 to Inter Parish Ministry, they are able to feed 15 individuals? So to keep that in perspective, as I went through the Starbucks, Starbucks drive-through today and got something to drink, for $5, they are able to purchase food to help feed 15 people. Did you also know that the need for food for families right here in our community is at an all-time high? We are excited to announce this year's All-In Collection Drive taking place on October 11th through the 17th. What a great way to bring our community together as we help feed families and nourish souls. Stay tuned for more details from each of your schools. And also new this year, we are so proud to partner with the Anderson Township Fire Department, who will be collecting food items from businesses and local community members. So we hope you will help us reach our goal. Our goal this year is 16,000 pounds of food. Last year, we brought in 15,000, so I'm confident we can do that again. And we also set a goal of fundraising of $6,000, which if we raise those funds, we will be able to have meals for 18,000 people in need. So on behalf of the foundation, I just want to thank our donors, our supporters. We are, we are committed to the kids, to their education, and we look forward to also recognizing outstanding alumni that have come through this school district and their many accomplishments. Have a good night.
14.3, Forest Hills Teacher Association.
Thank you. Hello and good evening. I'll make my remarks brief with three comments as I need to get home and rest up for two more days of Spirit Week at Nagle. First, during the first few months of my presidency, I've had the opportunity to establish regular patterns of meeting with district administration as we work together to identify shared goals and priorities for this year's work. Additionally, I've just begun to meet with building-level administration to learn more about the unique nature of each of our buildings. I look forward to further opportunities to collaborate in order to support all teachers and all students in maximizing their fullest potential. Second, while more work is needed to further improve the state's report card system and process, we recognize positively the move to a star rating system, as has been mentioned this evening, complete with explanations about what the stars mean, to provide our Forest Hills community with context. We agree that both academic and non-academic supports are essential for our students. The state report card should only be one measure of our success, and it's important that we work together as a district alongside our parents and community to ensure that we have a shared vision of success for all students and ways to measure our progress towards that goal. FHDA is committed in supporting this work. Third, we are proud of Forest Hills maintaining a high level of achievement, and you would predict correctly that I would highlight the daily commitment of anyone in our district who plays a role in providing delivery of professional instruction and support to our students. There is also another critical factor that makes Forest Hills great, our Anderson and Newtown communities. Parents, guardians, friends, neighbors, all play a role in helping each student to achieve their daily support as welcomed and acknowledged. In closing, we extend our warm congratulations to all individuals or groups honored here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. 15.0, Executive Session.
Pursuant to a high revised code section 121.22G2, I hereby move the board adjourned to executive session for the purpose of considering the purchase and sale of properties since disclosure at this time would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to persons whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest.
Thank you. I'll make a note that, um-
Do we need a second?
We need a second?
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
No.
Mrs. Stewart? Mrs. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Will action be taken after?
I would like to make a note that we will not be voting or any action will be taken after this meeting. Okay.